You're not ready.
I'm sorry.
Live, all right. Good evening, everyone. Here we are, and we are just returning from our closed session. So I'm gonna have a roll call for closed session, please.
Councilmember Barbie?
Here.
Councilmember Bran?
Here.
Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember San Marco? Absent. Councilmember MD?
Here.
Mayor Aspel?
Here. And we have nothing to report, or somebody show up late?
The only thing would be that Councilmember San Marco arrived at closed session at 4:50. He was there for closed session items number eight and nine.
Okay, good. All right, we're gonna adjourn to our regular city council meetings. I'm gonna call that to order, please, so it can have a roll call.
Councilmember Barbie?
Here.
Councilmember Bran?
Here.
Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember San Marco? Absent. Councilmember MD?
Here.
Mayor Aspel?
Here. Stand and salute our flag, and remain standing for a few moments of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, get this thing going here. We have no presentations or proclamations. Do we have any announcements? Start with Martha.
Yes, at my community meeting, many people inquired regarding the 3D CenterCal model for the waterfront development being available at its new location here in Redondo. There is a...
An event?
On Thursday, this Thursday, January 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30. The address is 239 North Harbor, right across from where Polly's on the pier is. This is open to the public. There will be light refreshments, and your parking will also be validated. So that's a public open house, 5:30 to 7:30, and then you can inquire about all the regular visiting hours and so forth at that time. But at my meeting, I said I would announce tonight the specifics regarding the open house. And if you have any questions, you can also contact thewaterfrontredondo.com.
Great. Bill?
Yeah, I'm having a district meeting on Monday, January 30th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., upstairs in the library. And I wanted to touch on just something real quick about the campaign that's going on. You know, everything gets kinda crazy. They call it the crazy season for a reason. And so I just wanna encourage everybody to kinda tone it down and focus on the issues. I've had some crazy suggestions. Somebody called me and asked me if I lived in San Pedro, and then I was running out my house. Somebody asked if I really worked for American Airlines, which is where I've been for 37 years. And then somebody, a fairly prominent person, went on the Nextdoor page and said that Martha Barbie told him that I stole all her campaign literature at an event, which is absolutely false. His name's Greg Abramowitz, and I asked him for a public apology since he made a public accusation, but I haven't heard anything since. But there's a lot of crazy things said, accusations made, and I would just encourage everybody to just focus on the issues, because that's what matters. Thank you.
Good idea. Okay, Christian?
Yeah, Thursday night, Washington Elementary and the cafeteria is gonna be my District III community meeting. That'll be from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And my special guest will be Library Director Susan Anderson.
Good. Steve?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Laura?
My community meeting is Saturday from 9:00 to 10:30, and I'll have Officer Ryan Harrison there, and he will be discussing the homeless situation.
Good. Yeah, I didn't have any, but you know, I'll echo what Bill said, is they call it the silly season. So everybody's gotta take a pill, and signs tend to walk away, and everybody starts going crazy, so, on every side, you know, so, yeah, stick to the issues, and we're all good. All right, so we're gonna move on. We have the approval of the agents... Excuse me, the Order of Agenda. Are we all good with the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay, then we are going to go to our agency, which is... It is the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Redondo Beach. So I'm gonna call that meeting to order, have a roll call, please.
Member Barbie?
Here.
Member Bran?
Here.
Member Horvath?
Here.
Member San Marco?
Here.
Member MD?
Here.
Chairman Aspel?
Here. So we have... Is the agenda okay for everybody?
Yeah.
And we have no Blue Folder items for this? Eleanor? Next thing up is the Consent Calendar, is about the only thing on here. It's items C1 through C5, and it's just housekeeping things. So we'll be voting on it in one motion unless somebody pulls it. So is there... Everybody good with this?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Consent.
Second.
Would anybody in the public want to comment on anything on this? Good. Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed?
Okay, Mayor, I need to read a couple of resolutions on here. C4, Dot by Title Only Resolution Number SA-1701-001, a resolution of the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Redondo Beach, approving and adopting a recognized obligation payment scheduled pursuant to California Health and Safety Code Section 34177i. C5, Adopt Resolution by Title Number SA-1701-002, a resolution of the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Redondo Beach, approving and adopting the administrative budget pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34177J. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And next on this is public participation on non-agenda items. Now, this is not the council, but you're welcome to come up and have a spend three minutes talking to the successor agency, to the redevelopment agency.
That's for...
Okay, okay.
Counsel.
All right, nobody? Good. So we have... There's no referrals to staff, hopefully? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, sweet. Okay. Now, we are gonna... We have Blue Folder items for...
Mayor, we need another roll call.
My lord, that's right. Roll call, City Council.
Okay. Councilmember Barbie?
Here.
Councilmember Bran?
Here.
Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember San Marco?
Here.
Councilmember MD?
Here.
Mayor Aspel?
We are here. Okay, Blue Folder items for H13 and L1. Is there a motion to accept these?
Motion to receive and file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we are back to City Council, and we have our consent calendar here, and it's items H1 through H15, and they will be adopted at one time unless somebody pulls something. Start with Martha, you okay?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Christian?
All good.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Would either of the public want to say anything about the Consent Calendar?
Motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? Go ahead.
H10, Adopt by Title Only Resolution Number CC-1701-003, a resolution of City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, amending the official book of class specifications for the position of police captain. H11, Adopt by Title Only Resolution Number CC-1701-004, a resolution, City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, accepting certain real property portions of Marine Avenue and Aviation Boulevard convened by the County of Los Angeles by quick claim deed. H13, Adopt by Title Only Resolution Number CC-1701-005, a resolution of City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain property to Chaffin &amp; Reeves, Inc., a California corporation. H15, Adopt by Title Only Ordinance Number 3166-17, an ordinance of the City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, amending certain provisions of Title III, Chapter IV, and adding Article VI and Sections 3-4.112 and 3-4.113 with certain modifications and changes to said codes to reflect local conditions for second reading and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we have public participation on non-agenda items, and you get three minutes to speak. Everybody's welcome to speak, as long as it's not something on the agenda. And we have written requests first. The first one, the lady went home. So the next one is Michael Ian Sacks. That's the only written request, and then from there on out, anybody can talk.
Hello, Mayor, Council, staff, concerned citizens. My name's Michael Ian Sacks. I'm running for mayor. I'd like to be the next mayor. I'm honored to be on the ballot with Mayor Aspel, Councilman Bran, both good men. I respect you very much. But this statement is about fiscal responsibility and a statement about the Seaside Lagoon. After last week's briefing by staff, it's painfully obvious that the Seaside Lagoon is not... It's prohibitive cost-wise, and it has been for a long time, as you mentioned, Mayor. Councilman Bran asked relevant questions relating to the cost, as you always do, and I could get into all the details of sample analysis for $25,000, a fine for $51,000, the unknown liability going forward. Infrastructure that the staff recommended had to be done, which we don't know what that costs, but has to be done, because if the city doesn't do it now, there's even more liability due to negligence. And so the cost and fines will continue to increase. And then there's the environmental issue about adding chlorine. We always wanna remove chemicals from any process. The budget is $650,000 for the lagoon. Fees, we've collected $400,000 last year off, so that's the cost. So the city is operating the lagoon with a loss of $250,000 a year, a quarter of a million dollars a year. I worked in an effluent treatment plant for the last 20 years, so I've dealt with these kind of permits for a long time. They just increasingly get more challenging as we go ahead. So I've dealt with these for a long time, expert in extensive knowledge of laboratory analysis and such. For these reasons, I'd like to call on the Council to communicate the cost of the Seaside Lagoon to residents, and then recommend that the Seaside Lagoon should not continue to operate as-is. But moving forward, we know that it is a unique aspect of Redondo Beach, and it has historical value. Many have said that. Looking, you know, irrespective of what happens with CenterCal or with the November Initiative report, the only viable path I see is opening up to the harbor. Swing and pill looked like it was way too costly. So I'd like to call on the Council to develop a plan to do so, irrespective of what happens in March 7th, and we should have our own plan. Taxpayer money is sacred. I believe it is one of the most important roles for public officials to always look for ways to reduce spending. It's a pleasure speaking with you.
Thank you.
I look forward to sharing ideas and hearing yours over the next few months.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Okay. That's our last written request. Anybody else have anything to say?
Evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Ralph Strutzenberg, District 1, and I am running for the District 1 City Council position. And for those of you here tonight, or those of you at home that I haven't met yet, I look forward to meeting you soon, and also look forward to serving with those of you that are left on the dais after March 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay. Anybody else? It's open mic. Is there a motion to receive and file?
Some, yeah.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Aspel, City Council members. I'm not running for anything, and I'm not sure this is the time I'm supposed to do this.
Well, you can... Whatever you want.
My name is Karen Kaiser, and I was chairman of the King Harbor Boat Parade this... last year. And I want to express our appreciation to the City Council for their support. We had Mayor Aspel attended the parade. Mayor Protam Steve San Marco and his son, who welcomed the community. We had three councilpersons as judges, Steve San Marco, Martha Barbie, and Christian Horvath. We had three harbor commissioners as judges, Brian Dalton, Lenora Bloss, and Deborah Jackson, and one harbor commissioner as a judge escort, Kari Kaiser. Three other community leaders served as judges, Doug Rodriguez of the Planning Commission, Ann Garten, Chamber of Commerce, and Mickey Marafino, CenterCal Vice President. Also, I want to take this opportunity to express our appreciation to our sponsors, who really make this possible, to be able to give our three youth groups a good share of the proceeds. Chevron, King Harbor Association, Houston Fairness 76, AES, CenterCal, and the Waterfront, San Pedro Fish Market, The Daily Breeze, Councilwoman Martha Barbie, Portofino Hotel, and Body Glove, along with our swag bag sponsors, Pelican Products, Kincaid's Restaurant, West Marine, and the King Harbor Yacht Club, of course. It was a good parade. I think everybody had a wonderful time. The weather gods were watching out for us, and we had a beautiful evening. And I just wanna thank the City Council for their help, their assistance, and it was a pleasure to be chairman.
Thank you. It's a fun night.
That was very nice.
And I'm really here representing Joan Smith, the 2015 Boat Parade Chair, because a couple of you city councilmen helped us out last year, but you were too busy partying for us to ever get your certificates into your hands. So tonight, we'd like to present to Councilman Christian Horvath and Councilperson Laura MD their nice certificates of appreciation for being judges in 2015. Permission?
Go ahead.
Thanks for all your help every year, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Come on down. There you go, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Suzie Royds, and I am a candidate for Redondo Beach City Council, District 4, 2017. Mayor Aspel, specifically, when I've been knocking doors in District 4, the residents have told me that you have conveyed to them that the Galleria is a done deal, that the apartments are going to be put up for Air Force personnel. Is that supposed to convince them it's patriotic just to accept 650 apartments at the mall? Let me ask you, aren't we still waiting for a final scope of the project from Forest City? And then the EIR follows that, and then a public response during agendized items? So it is not a done deal, and I heard this from more than one resident as I was knocking, actually in my own neighborhood. So what's going on here? I mean, it sounds like a back-room deal. This is exactly why I am running as council member for District 4, to represent the residents for resident-based solutions. San Marco and my group are still waiting. It's been two months for any feedback from either the mayor, the city, or Forest City on where they stand. So I'm confused as to why residents are telling me that there's nothing to be voted on in the future. The Galleria is a done deal. Thank you.
We're confused, too. Okay, thank you. Come on down. Anybody else?
Good evening, City Council, City Mayor, City Staff, great people Redondo Beach. Nils Narenheim, official candidate for the District 1 council seat. Just wanted to let everyone know, I had an event last week, Nachos with Nils. It was awesome. We had a lot of great time, 25-plus people, so successful, it spurred off another one for next week, Tuesday night, and I'd love to invite everyone to come on down for Nachos with Nils, private residents in the avenues. I'm also having a meet-and-greet at Ortega 120 next week, Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m. So love to invite everyone down. Went out door-knocking this weekend, met hundreds upon hundreds of new residents, haven't talked to before, haven't seen before, a lot of great ideas, deep concerns about the waterfront. Everyone is very timid at first to admit about the size and scope of the project being too big. I just wanna let everyone know that it's okay to admit that the project is too big. Paving over the Seaside Lagoon is inappropriate, but it's okay, because Measure C is here to help that project along, become a smaller project, become a better project, and, most importantly, become a coastal-dependent project. So yes, on Measure C. Glad to see you guys next week. I'll be out door-knocking this weekend. If anyone has any questions or comments, go ahead and send me an email, nils@votefornils.org. That's N-I-L-S@votefornils.org. And I will see you guys this weekend and next week. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Mayor, Staff, Council, Doug Rodriguez, District 2. Just wanted to mention, the police made an arrest of individuals on Sunday night who graffitied the Elks, and so, big thank you to the Police Department. And then Monday morning, Mayor Aspel and Martha Barbie both were contacted. Subsequently, Public Works was contacted, and the graffiti was promptly removed by that afternoon. And I drove by that afternoon, and I didn't know anything had happened. So I really just wanted to give a special thanks to City Staff for working together, Public Works, Ted Seaman, Keith Kaufman, for the great officers who handled that, and to remind the community, if you see something, say something. As a community, we can keep our city nice if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Gina Di Pietro, District 1, and I wanna piggyback off of what Doug had to say and say thank you to the Redondo Beach Police Department. I emailed them, and I documented something that was going wrong, and they took care of it, and I have so much faith and so much love for the Redondo Beach Police Department. They're fantastic. We're so blessed to live in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We are blessed to have our cops. Come on down.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Something I've been wanting to bring up is there's so many pedestrians...
Your name for the...
I'm sorry, Pam Combar. There's a lot of pedestrians that walk their dogs in the evening. A lot of us walk in the evening around here now. It's such a beautiful community. And my concern is there's some areas where there's specific pedestrian ways on corners that might wanna be looked at for lighting, because there are a lot of dark corners in the city. And I'm concerned, because, you know, I pull up and you see somebody, and you don't know if they wanna walk across, and in the Riviera, everywhere. But anyway, I just wanted to put that out to you, and maybe you could look... The city could look into night lighting in pedestrian walkways and corners. And on another note, speaking of the campaign season, yes, I'm from Torrance. Yes, I'm a row activist. Yes, I'm big, and I'm loud. This is according to a flyer that was posted about me. And no, I'm not going home. I spend as much money as any Redondo resident might in this city, even though my property taxes are in Torrance. There's both sides of the... There's both sides of the stories about what the taxpayers are gonna incur either way this project goes. But I'm not going anywhere, and I'm gonna get louder, and I'm gonna get bigger, and I'm gonna support and help for the cause. And the main reason is because this is coastal access, and the coastal access isn't just for Redondo residents. It's for anyone and everyone. It's for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
Good evening, Wayne Craig, District 1. Want to avoid building a mall that the city reports confirm won't be profitable for decades? Are you now thinking that doubling car traffic, blocking 80% of the ocean views, and realization that you've... That when you voted for Measure G, you didn't mean to build a 524,000-square-foot mall the size of 10 shade hotels? Good news is, there's a better option. We can revitalize our harbor without supersizing it. Yes on Measure C allows a public-private partnership, won't cost taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars, or heck, even forces to build a $25-million pool. So if you don't want this, vote for Measure C. If you want a lawn sign to proudly display in your yard, just go to the Facebook pages of Rescue Our Waterfront, or Keep Our Pier Mall Free. Yes on C. And finally, regarding that crazy season that we're all talking about tonight, Mayor Aspel, if you're gonna read from a paper in your hand, it's important to say the whole sentence. A few weeks ago, you read part of a sentence from an email and claimed, "I said you took $50,000 from CenterCal." Mayor Aspel, no, I didn't, and I actually answered it correctly when I said it did not. So what did this quote actually say? It actually said, "Talk about a fantastic return on investment for CenterCal's $50,000 of donations to Mayor Aspel and Councilmembers Horvath and MD." You unfortunately left off the Horvath and MD part. That statement is true, and confirmed the financial reports from the Chamber of Commerce, who funneled those funds. So if you don't want people to think that everything you say isn't true, or that you are using your position of authority to say silence opposition to your project, I recommend you repeat whole sentences, not just part of them. It would be like saying, "Mayor Aspel killed them last night," versus, "Mayor Aspel killed them last night with his incredible humor." Each of us... Each of those has a totally different meaning now, doesn't it? Thank you, and I hope we can all continue to be a bit more civil in this process. Thanks.
Good idea. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Todd Lewenstein. I'm a District 2 resident and a candidate for City Council. I would ask that the... It took many months to get the CenterCal model down to the waterfront, and many people are unavailable to make a viewing of the CenterCal model. So we're asking that you talk to the folks at CenterCal and perhaps make the models available over the weekends. That's when most people have free time. I know many people would appreciate it. Most of the time, most people see the models on Facebook more than any other place, so it would be great for them to see it in person. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I know that there's still a lot of talk about Option 1 and Option 2 and all the other things revolving around CenterCal, but really what it comes down to is what Councilman Bran had said earlier, is this project is way too big. Walking the streets of my district, I find that people are very concerned mostly about traffic. And we're saying that if you are not able to plan for anticipated traffic, not just around the particular area, but everything leading into the city, you're basically looking for a potential for failure. As Ben Frank would once say, failing to plan is planning to fail. And it's not the kind of thing that you can say, "Well, we'll see if we can figure it out later." It's something that residents wanna see now. People are fed up with their commutes home down PCH, and they're really concerned that they're not gonna be... Be spending less time with their loved ones. No matter how great the waterfront might become, traffic is the number-one issue in our area, and I think everybody can attest to that that's stuck in rush hour, or even on the weekends. We have a number of F-rated intersections, such as 190th and PCH, and Torrance and PCH. How are we gonna solve this before the problem happens, not after the problem happens? And where's the money gonna come from out of the city budget? If we're only talking of, you know, $3 to $6 million a year in generated revenue, where are we gonna come up with the money for all this potential road widening and intersection improvement? The Grove, which is one of the biggest shopping destinations or lifestyle centers in the area, has three-lane roads each direction heading into it. We're looking at Harbor Drive and looking at Barrel, and people are very concerned if the roads are widened, where's the money gonna come from? And if the roads widen, how is it gonna impact pedestrian traffic? So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Okay, anybody else? You've already spoken.
I don't get to speak twice?
No. Sorry. It's not a candidate's forum, but it was a good try. I gotta give you that. Let's try and keep the remark... We have CenterCal coming up on the agenda, so... Anybody else wanna speak on anything not on the agenda? Going once. There's another candidate in the room. Okay, moving along. We're closing it up now. All right, let me get over here. We are moving away from public participation in non-agenda items, we're going to public hearing, and we need ex parte communications, and it's gonna be about the public hearing, consider the lease agreement with an infrastructure financing between the city of Redondo Beach and Redondo Beach Waterfront LLC. So Martha?
Staff and residents.
Bill?
Yeah, staff, residents, consultants, all of the above.
All the above. I think that's... Christian? Steve?
Staff, residents, consultants, developers, attorneys. That's about it.
Laura?
Same.
Yep, plus a few other people in this room, but... And the leaseholders. But, yeah, we've been talking to a lot of people about this. So I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I will turn this over to staff now, and you can... It's about the public hearing on the agreement for lease of the property and infrastructure financing for the waterfront project by and between the city of Redondo Beach and the waterfront... Redondo Beach Waterfront LLC. So who's gonna go first?
Uh, I guess I'll take it over. So, good evening, Mayor Aspel, members of the City Council. For the record, Stephen Proud, Waterfront and Economic Development Director. Tonight, we're here to revisit the agreement for lease of property and infrastructure financing. What we'd like to do tonight is take you through an overview of that document. I apologize in advance if some of this seems a little repetitive from our hearing that we had on December thirteenth. But in the interest of going through the document in its entirety and reminding folks of the various provisions, we thought it was important to just present it from the beginning once again. So, just as a reminder, what the development program is, that's the subject of the agreement for lease of property and infrastructure financing, which we shorthand call the ALPFIF. The area includes the areas of the Redondo Beach Marina, the Seaside Lagoon, the International Boardwalk, Basin Three, the South Pier area, and the Torrance Circle. When this project is completed, it will represent an investment of over four-hundred-million of private capital in the Redondo Beach waterfront. That's an unprecedented amount of private capital that's being invested in our waterfront as a result of this project. It includes various components as part of the development program. That includes a retail component, which comprises approximately twenty percent of the project, restaurant and food uses that are thirty-five percent of the project, creative office space represents approximately twelve percent of the project. There is a specialty cinema that's included in the project, as well as a boutique hotel. All of that combined represents approximately three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand square feet of net new development inside of the harbor. Beyond the uses, there are a full suite of public amenities that are associated with the project, and that includes upgrades and opening Seaside Lagoon, taking down the fences and providing year-round public access, new bikeways and pedestrian paths that go, that, that better connect the, the bicycle and pedestrian experience throughout the waterfront area, improvements and replacements of the pier structures, including the municipal pier and the sport fishing pier. There are new parks, plazas, and open space. And perhaps most significant is the replacement of the pier parking structure itself. Just as a reminder of what the project area includes, what you see outlined in red is the entirety of the project area. There are some dashed red lines on this diagram, which are intended to depict where the current existing structured parking places are. So you see those outlined as part of the diagram, but, but for the most part, the project includes everything within the solid red boundary. Once the project is completed, this is a conceptual drawing of what that will look like. This is the drawing that was included in all of the entitlement documents that were considered by the city's Harbor Commission, as well as the City Council, when this project came to you on appeal in October. Just by way of process overview, we've gone through this slide before, but it, I, I think it's always important to remember that this is a, a project that is well over ten years in the making. Larry and Will, who are here with Cosmont Associates, are, are really some of the architects of the early work that was done. That includes the Harbor Asset Management Plan in two thousand and seven and the Harbor Business Plan in two thousand and ten. As a result of some of those recommendations, the city took some action to reacquire some of the master leaseholders, leaseholds that exist in the harbor, and that includes the Redondo Beach Marina, Pier Plaza, and International Boardwalk. And those acquisitions totaled approximately twenty-three-point-five-million dollars to acquire those spaces. The city went through a public request for pro- qualifications, request for proposal process, a solicitation and selection process that ultimately resulted in the selection of our private development partner, which is CenterCal Properties. And most recently, we have negotiated an agreement to acquire the Redondo Fisherman's Cove Company, and that is the subject of, uh, a subsequent agenda item that you have before you this evening. As the process unfolded, there were some initial documents that were negotiated as part of the, the transaction. This included an exclusive negotiating agreement. That exclusive negotiating agreement was approved by the council to be extended to January thirty-first of this year. A reimbursement agreement, by which we get reimbursed for expenditures that are made as part of the pre-development activities on the project, as well as a memorandum of understanding that outlined some of the basic framework for the transaction that was subsequently negotiated and memorialized in the ALPFIF. In addition, the EIR for the project was completed. That was certified by the Harbor Commission and the City Council. As I mentioned earlier, there were entitlements that were granted, a conditional use permit, a coastal development permit, and Harbor Commission design review. All of those were approved by the Harbor Commission and the City Council when the, came before you on appeal. What you have tonight now are the lease documents, what represents the transaction and contract between the city and CenterCal Properties. And the framework of those agreements is what we call the Agreement for Lease of Property and Infrastructure Financing, as I mentioned earlier, the ALPFIF. The ALPFIF has a main body, and then it has several attachments, notable attachments, to it, that include an uplands lease, a tidelands lease, and a concessionaire agreement. And we'll talk a little bit more about each of those documents as we go through the presentation. As a reminder, I mentioned that there was an MOU that was negotiated that laid out a, a general framework for the transaction that has subsequently been negotiated further. This chart, which we reviewed at, at a previous meeting with you, shows the comparison of what was negotiated in the memorandum of understanding and what's currently contained within the ALPFIF itself. Briefly going through this, originally, the, the MOU contemplated that the city would be making a contribution of twenty-five-million dollars for certain public improvements that would be provided as part of the project. That is no longer the case in the ALPFIF. All of the public improvements that were part of that twenty-five-million are now being provided by CenterCal. Originally, the MOU contemplated that, uh, the, that the, the developer would provide a, a rent credit payment for, to pay off the land acquisition debt. That is now the city's obligation, and, and, and under the MOU, it was always the city's responsibility for site delivery. So essentially, for those first two lines, what we did was, we took public contributions and pushed those to the developer's side of the table, and we took on the responsibility of retiring the debt associated with those lease acquisitions that I mentioned earlier. Part of the conversation early on was the obligation of the city to develop a buildable site to CenterCal, and that work included some improvements to piers, pilings, and seawalls. Those have always been the obligation of the city under both the MOU and the ALPFIF. Originally, the MOU contemplated that the city would be responsible for all of the upgrades and improvements to Seaside Lagoon. That is now a CenterCal obligation under the ALPFIF. Uh, I mentioned earlier, the sport fishing pier. Under both agreements, that was a city obligation, as well as the obligation to provide a public boat launch, which is a requirement of our local coastal plan for the development to progress forward. Under the rent structure, the MOU had a concept of a minimum rent that would be paid to the city, that would begin in year thirty-one and would be paid through the term of the lease in year ninety-nine. What has been negotiated with CenterCal and included in the ALPFIF now is a minimum rent payment that begins in year three. So there are two months of construction activity before that begins, the lease payment begins. The lease payment begins in year three, and that lease payment is set as two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for years three through thirty. Once the project gets to year thirty-one, that rent, minimum rent payment increases to one-million dollars and remains at, at that level through the remainder of the lease. That said, all of those rent, rent, uh, minimum rent, uh, components are subject to a consumer price index, uh, that would adjust the minimum rent by ten percent, a maximum of ten percent every five years. So we will see that minimum rent grow from the initial two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars by CPI capped at ten percent, and then again, from a million dollars with CPI capped at ten percent every five years. There was a change in the participation rent structure originally under the MOU. The city would get twenty-five percent of NOI after the developer achieved a ten percent return on their costs. That has now been changed so that the city would receive a participation rent of ten percent, once the developer reaches a nine percent return on their costs. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the, through the presentation. Probably important to note, I do have a footnote up there that the, the city payoff of the land acquisition does not cont- currently, that nineteen million does not include what, the action that you'll be considering later tonight, which would be the acquisition of the Redondo Fisherman's Cove Company. So on to the, the actual structure of the ALPFIF itself. As I mentioned, there's a main body of a document, uh, and then there are primary attachments, which are uplands and tidelands ground leases, concessionaire agreement, and apologies. That property management agreement should be struck. That, that no longer exists as part of the agreement. And the reason that that should have been struck is, under key concept number one, is that there is no longer an option for the south phase of the project. It's been eliminated from the document itself. So there is, once the leases are executed, all of the property that is necessary for the development will be under the control of the developer. That said, we do still anticipate that the project could be constructed in phases, and those phases could occur sequentially, or they could occur simultaneously. There is flexibility in terms of how those phases will be developed, and ultimately, there will be a detailed construction schedule that outlines how those phases will occur. The phasing is still helpful to us in a few regards. One is that there are some existing leaseholders with term that we have to address. There are relocation of tenants that needs to occur, and so it's, 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 uh, important that we consider that in the overall construction schedule and perhaps build a component of the project that allows those relocation occur, to occur, and allows us to properly address the leaseholders with existing term. In addition, there are provisions in the ALPFIF that provide the city with cash flow from some of the operations that will remain open and running while the project is under construction. And so having the project be phased allows that cash flow to continue to accrue to the city until such time as those facilities are needed for the development. For example, and perhaps most notably is the, the parking garage itself, because that's in the southern for- portion of the project, that may remain operable for some period of time until they're ready to demolish that structure and move forward with that component of the project. In that interim period of time, the city would receive the net revenues that flow from that, from that component of the project. So we've shown this, this photo before. This is now more of an illustrative diagram on how those phases could occur and some of the public amenities and improvements that could be a part of those phases. As I mentioned, when we get to final constructions drawings, this, this diagram may change. There may be pieces that overlap, um, but we think generally, the project will still occur in a north-to-south direction, with the first phase being the northern portion of the project, and the second phase being the southern portion of the project. Some of the key so- other key concepts that are embedded in the agreement for lease of property, the ALPFIF, are the city's obligation to deliver the property free of debt. I mentioned that nineteen-million-dollar obligation that, that exists right now as a result of the leasehold acquisitions. We'll talk a little bit later, but that debt would be restructured, and we would deliver the property free of debt to the developer for their use. I also mentioned the city does have obligations to do site improvements that would support development. Those include the structural improvements to the municipal pier and international boardwalk, notably Basin Three, as well as the replacement of the sport fishing pier itself. The developer is responsible for completing the entitlement process and securing all the necessary entitlements. That includes not only the entitlements here from the City of Redondo Beach, but also entitlements that may be necessary from agencies such as the Coastal Commission. They have the obligation to secure all of the permits that may be necessary for the project. Those include permits that would come from the city, from the Army Corps of Engineer, Coast Guard, any other jurisdiction that has, uh, permitting authority over any element of the project. They have an obligation to finance, construct the improvements, and then importantly, to maintain the project and continue to make capital investments in the project over time, so that we continue to see a high-quality project endure into the future. Some of the other conditions in the, in the ALPFIF that are, that are required, and these are really conditions that are necessary for the execution of the ground lease. When we execute the ALPFIF, we haven't granted the ground leases yet. The ground leases are attachments to the ALPFIF itself. In order for the developer to secure the ground leases, both the tidelands and uplands ground lease, there are certain conditions that need to be satisfied for that to occur. As I mentioned, they need to have all of their land uses, uh, land use approval secured. They need to have their debout, their, their initial demolition and grading permits secured. We need to see that they have the construction and financing in place to execute the project. They would like to know that we have our financing in place for those improvements, for which we have responsibility to provide as part of the project. A relocation plan needs to be developed for the tenants, and that needs to be in place. Any required insurance need to have been procured and, and in place prior to execution of the ground lease. We need to ensure that the, the environmental condition of the site is satisfactory for the development that needs to occur. And any outstanding title issues that may impact the project need to be addressed prior to the execution of the ground leases. In addition, the ALPFIF has some other additional provisions that are associated with it. It outlines the roles and responsibility for the various public improvements. We've talked a little bit about that. We'll talk a little bit more about that. It describes the required types of construction security, so the types of, uh, performance bonds and payment bonds that may be necessary or will be necessary to support the development of the project and the timing of securing that con- security. It describes the actions that constitute a default, so when is either party in default under the agreement, what kinds of remedy options are available to the parties, and under what conditions could the agreement be terminated. And then, finally, it sets forth any of the conditions that are necessary if the developer were interested in transferring any component of the project to another entity, and the timing, uh, associated with that. So that's the body of the ALPFIF. It's really a, it's really a, a framework document that gets us from where we are today to the execution of the ground leases themselves, the uplands and the tidelands ground lease. So it will be in place for a period of time. And then the intent is, once the leases and the concessionaire agreement are executed, the ALPFIF drops off, and those leases then govern the, the contractual relationship between the city and the developer on a going-forward basis. Some of the things that the ground lease spells out are the site boundaries. As I mentioned earlier, that now, the site boundaries include all the property necessary for development of the waterfront, um, assuming that the action later on this evening is, is approved by the council. There are different terms for different agreements. The uplands ground lease is set to expire at ninety-nine years. The tidelands would expire at sixty-six years, and that's a statutory limit that we have on the tidelands component of the project. And the concessionaire agreement, which governs a portion of the Seaside Lagoon that would be, uh, developed with some commercial uses and, and some access improvements, would be set for a term of fifty years. The rent structure has changed a little bit because the option has been eliminated. So, now, the way that the rent structure is set up is the minimum rent, as I mentioned earlier, would begin in year three at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year, would increase by CPI capped at ten percent every five years. And then that minimum rent increases to one-million dollars in year thirty-one, and that one-million-dollar number continues to increase by CPI capped at ten percent every year. Talked about percentage rent earlier. Ten percent of net operating income after the developer gets a nine percent return on costs. We think that's important because the, the threshold of the return, moving from ten percent to nine percent, means that the city has a higher probability of being able to receive percentage rent than it would if we were to leave that threshold at ten percent. So while the, the actual participation percentage may be lower, the probability of pers- of actually receiving percentage rent does increase with that lower return threshold. Maintenance and repair obligations, I touched on this earlier. One of the important components of this project is the developer has an obligation to continue to maintain the project over time. And that obligation is spelled out in specific term. It says that they will maintain it in a first-class, Class A condition. That includes all the exterior buildings, all the buildings, all the exterior parks, plazas, open spaces, parking garages, Seaside Lagoon. So they are taking a maintenance obligation that we currently have today, and then incorporating that into their operation to maintain the waterfront project on a go-forward basis. They will be making future capital investments into the project. The, the ALPFIF and the ground leases lay out an investment of a minimum of one-point-five percent of gross revenue into the capital improvements. We will get an annual report every year, so we know what that money is being spent on. And then there will be periodic look-backs that will occur in years twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five, to ensure that they've spent the full amount of those proceeds. In the event that they haven't, then we'll sit down and negotiate how they can spend the remainder amount of money, of money for that period of time into capital improvements that benefit the project and improve its longevity. There are provisions for the sale and assignment of the project. Those provisions are key to stabilization. When the project is constructed and is, has started to achieve occupancy, stabilization has been defined in our, in our world as seventy-five percent tenant occupancy for twelve consecutive months, or twenty-four months following the project completion. So that's the point at which the project is available for transfer, for sale, or assignment to another entity. That said, if CenterCal, the developer, would like to reorganize their capital, add additional capital partners, they may, they can do that at any time. They could do that now, they could do that shortly after the ALPFIF has been executed, but the sale to another owner-operator has to occur after stabilization has occurred. One of the attachments, and one of the questions that has come up, is the use and operating plan related to Seaside Lagoon. As I mentioned at the last time we reviewed this, that use and operating plan was reviewed in two public hearings, one with the Rec Park Commission and one with the Harbor Commission. Very well-vetted document, and it lays out a very specific process by which the Seaside Lagoon can be used for various types of events, hours of operation, maintenance responsibility, et cetera, testing, water quality testing obligations. So there's a very specific document that lays out that information in terms of how the Seaside Lagoon could be used and operated on a- the seaside lagoon could be used and operated on a go-forward basis. So that's kind of the framework of the leases. Want to talk a little bit about what does this mean for the city, what some of the fiscal considerations are if you all elect to move forward with the project. And we really look at this from two perspectives. What if, one, what if there were no project? What would the obligations and capital improvements be and who would have that responsibility? And then how would that look different if the waterfront project were moving forward? So under the no-project alternative, if you will, the baseline capital improvements, and I'll show this to you on a chart on the next slide, would total between $102 and $108 million. There are additional city costs, which are not part of those baseline capital improvements, and that's $55 to $75 million. And those numbers are largely driven by obligations that we would have if the project didn't occur to continue to maintain some of our leasable assets. So for example, the buildings on Pier Plaza. If the project didn't move forward, we have roofing obligations, repair obligations for windows, we have maintenance of the buildings themselves, general maintenance of the buildings themselves, and we would be into a fairly aggressive maintenance program for things like Pier Plaza, for the international boardwalk. Assets that, in our opinion, have reached the end of their useful life, but if we were required to continue to use them, would require some kind of capital investment to continue to use them on a go-forward basis. When you total those two together, the total obligation to the city for that under the no-project would range anywhere from $157 to $183 million. Now, if the waterfront project were moving forward, the baseline capital improvements would be $115 to $121 million, and I'll show you why that's different on the next slide. Our share of that program reduces itself down to $14 million. And it really is related to repairs to the municipal pier, repairs to Basin III, and the sport fishing pier. The developer picks up all of the other obligations that are in the baseline capital improvements, and that's anywhere between $101 and $107 million. The city does have one other additional cost of $6 million, and that's related to the public boat launch facility that we've estimated at $6 million. So our total obligation under the waterfront project for these improvements is approximately $20 million. The developer does have some other developer costs. They're about $16 million, which would bring their total to $127 to $133 million. This is the breakdown, and I apologize, there's a lot of numbers on this screen, but it really starts to detail out. And I will tell you, this is updated. You had this in your last staff report. You had this in your last presentation. It's been refined somewhat, so you see a few different numbers that maybe were perhaps in that previous presentation. Some of the, perhaps the big notable difference is, on the very last line before it says "total costs," there's a line that says "Plaza Parking Rehabilitation." In the previous version of this chart that was in our staff report and was presented to you on your December 13 meeting, we had a TBD to be determined on that line item. As we've talked about it and discussed it further, we believe it's appropriate to include the cost of the Plaza Parking Rehabilitation on both the city's obligation as well as the developer improvements. The developer is obligated to make those improvements. It's in the ALPFIF that at some point if that plaza parking structure needs to be rehabilitated or replaced, they have an obligation to do that. And that is outside of the other capital improvement monies that they're setting aside, the 1.5% of gross revenues. That doesn't count against that total. This is an additional obligation. So we think in either scenario, that Plaza Parking Rehabilitation will need to occur. It's a question of when that needs to happen. So we felt it was appropriate to add that line item. I think that's probably the most notable change on the chart from the previous versions that you've seen. We did update the utilities line. We did update the storm drain line. Under the city scenario, we wouldn't have as much utility work to do as if the waterfront project were moving forward. But the order of magnitude on this chart remains unchanged. You know, the city obligations are still in the $150 million-plus range. If the waterfront project were moving forward, our obligations would be $20 million, and the developer would be picking up the remainder of that cost load for these improvements. The second fiscal consideration are the impacts to the city's general fund. And as we've mentioned previously and you've had presented to you, there have been different analyses to analyze the various potential revenues that could be generated from the project. The analysis that you'll get more detail on in just a minute from Cosmont Companies estimates that the general fund increase for the project could be somewhere between $269 million and $384 million over the life of the project. Again, if you look at numbers from my previous presentation, you'll see that those have grown a little bit. There's a reason that those have grown a little bit relative to the timing of construction. We also documented what we call the halo effect. We think that the project could have and will have a positive impact on surrounding businesses, hotels. That could in turn drive additional sales tax revenue and TOT revenue and increase the performance to the city's general fund. If you add that in, it adds about another half million dollars a year in revenue that could occur from that halo effect. When you look at the net cumulative cash flow to the city, all funds, harbor fund, both tidelands and uplands, city general fund, the estimate ranges anywhere from $324 million to $513 million over the life of the project and revenues to the city. So I think it goes without saying that the project will have a positive fiscal impact on the city. Now, that's not to say that there won't need to be some adjustments that will occur. We've documented in our staff report that there will be a move and a reduction from harbor leasing revenue that will be offset by city general fund revenue, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then finally, one of the positive impacts of the project, and I mentioned it earlier, is the developer has the maintenance obligation for this project on a go-forward basis. They have the obligation to have to spend 1.5% of their gross revenues on capital expenditures. So they have that obligation going forward, and we get to shed those expenses as part of the project moving forward. So there's a reduction in ongoing capital expenditures and maintenance. As we've looked forward and tried to think through what our funding strategy would be, since the city does have obligations under the ALPFIF, we've looked at this from three different perspectives. The first is that, as you look at the capital improvements that are going to be necessary, one of the ways that we can start to fund those capital improvements is through the use of our existing fund balance. It currently doesn't contain $20 million, but there is a significant portion of fund balance remaining in our tidelands fund, which would help us with the sport fishing pier, municipal pier, boat launch, and basin III. That may need to be supplemented by some small amount of money, but we believe that there's going to be enough in our fund balance, especially as that balance grows over the intervening years until the time of lease execution, to allow us to be able to do those infrastructure obligations. Beyond that, one of the things that we need to do is to restructure our existing debt that we have as a result of the lease acquisitions that we made. I mentioned earlier, we purchased the Redondo Beach Marina, the international boardwalk, and Pier Plaza. We borrowed funds to acquire those leaseholds, and what we would do is restructure that debt. We would extend the amortization period to 30 years. Right now, it's a shorter period with a balloon payment associated with it. This would extend that amortization period out to 30 years. By restructuring the debt, we would secure the additional principal that we need for the acquisition if approved by the council of the Redondo Fisherman's Cove Company leasehold. And when all of that is said and done, and you look at the amortization period and the additional principal, the debt service that we have today in terms of our annual debt service would largely remain the same. We would be spending about the same amount of money every year on debt service that we currently spend today because we're stretching out the length of our payments over a longer period of time. So, and when we've looked at that and looked at sources of funding for that, we think that we can service that debt off of new and existing leasehold revenues that exist in the uplands portion of the harbor. Finally, and I'm going to give it to Will, I can stop talking, is a funding strategy that involves the reallocation of costs. As this project moves forward, there are going to be properties that are taken offline. We're going to enter into a ground lease and a tidelands lease with the development entity. They're going to start the development of the project if it's approved by the council. And as they do that, certain properties will be taken offline, and the lease revenue will be taken offline associated with those properties. So there'll be a period of time where we're sort of dark from a leasing, lease revenue perspective. What we expect over time is that those lease revenues will be replaced with increased general fund revenues. In addition, any ongoing general fund service allocation that are allocated to the harbor and specifically the uplands fund within the harbor would be reallocated to the city's general fund, which would underwrite that for a short period of time until the new general fund revenues come online. And then ultimately, down the line, those are more than sufficient to offset the period of time by which those reallocated expenses are hitting the general fund. So those are the funding strategies. What I'd like to do right now is ask Will Solholt from Cosmont Companies to take you through a little more detail on the analysis they conducted, the economic analysis they conducted, where they looked at all these various components of the project, and give you a little more background on that so you have a better understanding of the work that we've done to analyze this. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Will, and I'll just click slide.
Very good. Thanks, Mayor, council members, and Stephen. As Stephen introduced, my name is Will Solholt. I'm with Cosmont Companies, and we've had the opportunity and pleasure to be of service to the city for about 10 years now, working on the process and stepping up to this transaction. And we've had, based on that experience, the opportunity to really perform, we think, a pretty comprehensive analysis of what the transaction represents to the city as the waterfront project is proposed versus a transaction that would be a city-only project. And I first want to clarify, we do say the economics to the city on the presentation. The perspective of our analysis is from the lens of the city. It's not from the lens of the developer or the operator of the waterfront project. And so it's not reliant on the success or doesn't measure how successful the project is, but rather how the city revenues perform on different levels of success of the project. We did, based our analysis on existing revenues and expenses, so we looked at historic trends to the harbor funds as well as the general fund. We looked at the required infrastructure improvements and costs associated with the same. And then we layered in our projections of revenues and expenses associated with the waterfront project and a hypothetical city-only project. And I'll talk about kind of the program for each of those here in just a minute. The summary I'm giving you tonight is really an abbreviated, or moderately abbreviated, summary of our report that was made publicly available with the agenda for this city council meeting. And I encourage everybody who's interested to review that full report. There's a lot more details, a lot more information, an explanation of our various assumptions and other scenarios that we're not talking about tonight. But we will provide an opportunity certainly to answer any questions you may have. As a reference, the report also includes some analysis that's required pursuant to Assembly Bill 562 and 806 related to the city's leasing or sale of property. Next slide, please. So as I introduced, the perspective of the analysis is really from the city's perspective. And we looked at the uplands funds, the tidelands funds, collectively the harbor funds, as well as the general fund, and how the proposed project, as well as a hypothetical city-only project, would impact existing revenues and expenses. Now, within the uplands fund and the tidelands fund, the primary revenues really come from leases or rent revenue and parking income. And the primary expenses associated with those same funds are maintenance, general operations, and overhead utilities, those types of things, and then allocation from the city general fund for police and fire services. And on the general fund side, the primary sources of revenue that we looked at associated with the project were sales tax, property tax, and transient occupancy tax. For reference and scale of the regular sales tax rate, the city in essence gets about 1%. So if you buy something for $100, the city would get $1 of sales tax revenue. With respect to property tax, if you pay $100 in property taxes of the general levy, the city receives about $16, a little more than $16 of that. And then on the hotel transient occupancy tax side, the city has a gross 12% TOT rate. So when we did our analysis, we looked at all these different factors and really took a look at where the uplands and tidelands funds would be at the end of the day, considerations of these two alternatives. With respect to the general fund revenues, we're looking exclusively at net new general fund revenues. So those are net figures, considering what the waterfront project, the footprint of the waterfront project already generates today, and only showing the net growth to those existing revenues. The second-to-last bullet you see up there, generally all figures are provided in dollars 2016. That's to kind of assist and make it easier to make comparative analyses. We have information historically from a variety of information sources. We have historic figures and estimates that we've looked at, and so we've made adjustments to all those to try and represent them in dollars 2016. Finally, we do provide, in the report that's online, full assumptions on lower base and higher estimates for both the waterfront project as well as the hypothetical city-only project. Things that we change in different assumptions in lower base and higher, as an example, would be assumptions on sales tax, sales per square foot, hotel performance. Property tax remains pretty stable throughout because that's based on estimated values of the project. But we do also evaluate different levels of project performance, so that would be one piece of the analysis that looks at the potential success of the waterfront project. And then on the city-only project, similarly, we look at and evaluate potential differences in lease revenues to the city. Next slide, please. With respect to the program for the waterfront project, our analysis is based on the information contained in the waterfront Redondo Beach Design Book. I think that was made available in June. Generally, it's about 315,000 square feet of retail dining and entertainment space. That includes the market hall, includes an approximately 125-room hotel, the 34,000-square-foot theater, and about 55,000 square feet of office. Now, it's important, when we make our analyses, we consider all these uses, we assign unique values in terms of revenue generation to all these uses, and so that's the program that we considered. Additionally, on the right-hand side up there, you'll see, as Stephen introduced, there are a number of infrastructure improvements and general public improvements that will be made, including seaside lagoon, pedestrian boardwalks, bike path and circulation improvements. There is a pedestrian bridge that's proposed between Mul D and the municipal pier, a replacement of the existing parking garages. And then in our report, you also find, it's about three pages or three slides, listing the various improvements that are proposed to be made within the waterfront area associated with the waterfront project. Next slide, please. Now, for comparison purposes, we've created a hypothetical city-only project. This is based on our experience, understanding of the area, and general urban planning and philosophy as to what may be possible as an alternative in a smaller, kind of scaled-down footprint. In essence, this really looks at replacing what's existing within the area now. The 45,000 square feet on Mul D, that's the larger circle on the left-hand side, Redondo Beach Marina, would be replaced. Could be the same configuration, it could be a different configuration, but the bottom line is about 45,000 square feet of building area will be replaced. At the, excuse me, at the long international boardwalk, we remove the leased square footage, and that will be replaced, about 15,000 square feet. At the pier deck or pad two, and/or pad two, the Fisherman's Wharf would be reconstructed as well. And then the parking garage would be replaced, and a new hotel deck would be placed on top of that. And conceptually, there would be a hotel partner that would be brought in to operate a hotel on top of a hotel deck constructed by the city. Similar to the waterfront project, there are a number of improvements that we expect would have to be made. You'll see the same list there as you saw for the waterfront project. The omission is the pedestrian bridge. And there's a long list as well in the report that details what our assumptions are. So with respect to the cost of improvements, this is similar to what you just saw with Stephen. We've broken it out slightly differently. There are a number of improvements required on the waterfront project. The city has no exposure for building reconstruction. Should the city go it alone, it would be responsible for building reconstruction. That's the 45,000 square feet I was talking about on Mul D, the 16,000 square feet on Fisherman's Wharf, the 15,000 square feet at the pier level. We estimate that at about $300 per square foot would be a little over $30 million. The balance of the infrastructure under the waterfront project, the city would be responsible for about $14 million. That's related primarily to the municipal pier reconstruction, as well as reconstruction of the sport fishing pier. Under the city-only project, the infrastructure burden is much greater. We estimate that at about $118 million. Now, in the other category, the plaza parking garage, based on analysis that was done a few years ago, probably needs to be replaced in about 2045, about a little under 30 years from now. We've also included in our analysis of cash flow, looking out 30 years, a cost in present value dollars of about $13 million. And then the boat launch, as Stephen introduced, is also an obligation per the Coastal Commission. And we've got that at about $6 million. So bottom line, total city costs and city obligations related to the waterfront project are about $20 million versus the city-only project, we estimate at about $168 million. Next slide, please. Thank you. So now I'm going to go into just very high-level... So now I'm going to go into just very high-level analysis of the two scenarios that we're looking at. Under the waterfront project, we talked about, the majority of the infrastructure improvements are made by the developer, and the developer's also responsible for ongoing maintenance. And the city reduces most of its ongoing maintenance expenditures related to the waterfront area. The cost with respect to rent, the cost of the required infrastructure improvements have the effect of lowering the supportable land value, and so that results in less rent than the city currently receives from within the project footprint. Now, the way the transaction and structure is set up and works is that the reduction in rent revenues is more than offset by increases in the general fund revenues. So rather than the city making and having the burden of making the infrastructure improvements and paying for those costs, the city is able to effectively pay for those costs by reductions in rent and make up for those reductions in rent by net increases in sales tax, property tax, and transient occupancy tax revenues. We also think, as Stephen introduced, that there is a potential for a halo effect from increases in business activities within the broader harbor area, and that shows up as increases in sales tax, property tax, as well as some lease revenues on percentage rent-based leases. We pegged that at about 10 percent. We think that that's a pretty conservative and reliable halo effect, and I'll talk about that more in just a minute. Bottom line, the waterfront project, we expect, would result in the delivery of the infrastructure improvements while limiting the city's costs and increasing overall revenues to the city. Now, you thought Stephen's slide was bad with numbers? This one's really bad. It won't be a test, don't worry. We're not going to focus on the numbers. What I want to do is just run through briefly what this sheet represents. And you'll find, I believe, about nine of these sheets in the report that you can download and so you can actually see what the numbers look like. But I'm just going to break this out a little bit. At the top, top section, if you can see this pointer, we've got this area above the gray bar, and that is really looking at the uplands fund, the tidlands fund, and general fund revenues over a 99-year period, and it's broken out into 10-year groups, so you can kind of see how we estimate things will perform over the life of the uplands lease. These revenues in the general fund portion of that are directly attributable to the project. With respect to the uplands and tidlands fund, this is the consideration of the impact of the project to those funds. So it includes other lease revenues outside of the footprint of the waterfront project. It includes other maintenance obligations outside of the footprint of the waterfront project, and it rolls over existing costs, importantly, that, as an example, the uplands currently incurs. So those may be things like police, fire, general administrative costs, and so we just roll those budgets forward, we don't make adjustments for them, even though, conceptually, they could be offloaded to the general fund, or the general fund could support those expenses going forward.
It's online for the public, though?
I'm sorry?
These graphs are online? Charts are up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make sure.
The bottom piece of the analysis, below the gray area, focuses on the halo effect, and so that's that 10 percent bump that we're talking about. And then the charts on the left, the left-hand side, is a 30-year chart. The chart on the right is the same thing, just showing 99 years. The blue line that's on the charts, that's the direct impact, that's everything above the gray bar, so that's the direct impact to the project, to the general fund, as well as uplands and tidlands. The green line incorporates the halo, as well as any potential percentage rent. Now, I talked about, we've got several scenarios for each of the evaluations, we've got a lower base and a higher. On the lower and base scenarios, we project no percentage rent. We think that's a fairly conservative projection. We're pretty aggressive with our reinvestment analysis and cost estimates related to the performance of the project, and so that yielded no percentage rent or participation rent under those scenarios, whereas the high projection yielded participation rent. The bottom line, if you just want to look at the direct impacts of the project, you can pick the blue line if you want to believe, and as we do, that there will be a halo effect and you may yield percentage rent in some scenarios, you look at the green line. The other important thing to look at and consider is where those lines pass the zero mark. That's really the payback period that we estimate, and we'll start to look in more detail at kind of some of these conclusions now. So the summary, we estimate net cumulative cash flow to the waterfront project to be in the range of about 300 to 500 million. The lowest cumulative cash flow, so that's the bottom of the trough, if you think back to that chart, the nadir of the line is about 26 to 30 million under the different scenarios. And this is where it gets, the important point is that we think the break even, based on that 26 to 30 million, so how long does it take to recoup that cumulative negative cash flow of about 26 to 30 million? We pegged that at about 11 to 23 years. The short side, the 11, is under a, the higher analysis with the halo. The longer 23 years is under kind of our lower-case analysis without the halo. And you can see at the bottom there, just another summary, total city costs under the waterfront project scenario, about 20 million. Cumulative cash flow without the halo, without participation rent, about 200 to 300 million. With the participation rent and halo, about 300 to 500 million. Participation rent ranges from 0 to 84, the 84 million you'll find in the higher evaluation that we completed. And then the lowest, kind of the trough, the bottom, the amount of money that the city needs to find cash for, the majority of which it has, is about 26 to 30 million. And we would anticipate that much of that, the bulk of that, would be accommodated and funded through general, excuse me, uplands and tidlands reserves, and to the extent desired, there may be some backfiller required by the general fund, or there may be an opportunity to smooth out cash flow, if you will, by financing some of the improvements down the road. Next slide, please. Under the city-only project, bottom line is that all the infrastructure improvements and vertical improvements will be borne by the city. The benefit is that the city will maintain existing lease and parking revenue sources. However, it also maintains existing maintenance obligations. And the really difficult piece of this evaluation and this project would be that the city would have to fund a big burden, and it's about 168 million is what we estimate. It's on a cash flow ba, or, excuse me, on a cost basis. We'll look at cash flow basis in just a minute. And it's expected, and we expect that it would result in substantial deficits during at least the term of the financing, and those deficits would require, we think, either general fund support or a general obligation bond. Next slide. Providing this table again, just so you can see a similar comparison, I'll just point out the blue line in this case, there is no green line. We don't anticipate a halo with this. This is essentially replacing the existing improvements as they are down at the waterfront right now. The chart on the left, again, that's a 30-year projection. You can see that we're, we could just start to bottom out after about 30 years of negative cash flow. Subsequent to that, you start to recoup some of those costs, but it takes a substantial amount of time just to break even. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, under this scenario, the city is responsible for the cost of improvements. Rather than a, about a 26 to 30 million dollar negative cash flow, we're looking at about a 98 to 155 million dollar cash, negative cash flow, substantial long-term losses. The payback period, instead of being 11 to 23 years under the waterfront project scenario, under the city-only project scenario, becomes 49 to 67 years. And in addition, just as the city's breaking even, so 50, 60, 70 years down the road, some of the infrastructure improvements and investments the city will be making in the near term would probably be at their, end of their useful life, and so just as the city is breaking even, they would probably have to make more investments. And finally, the last but not least, important point, the city would have a substantial construction and operational risk under this scenario. The city's not in the business of constructing things like this typically. It's not in the business of operating these types of assets, and it would be exposed to those risks. Next slide, please. So this is small, small font again. I'm just going to compare the highlights of these two. The first set, from left to right, again, under the waterfront project, we estimate general fund revenues, uplands, tidlands, cumulative cash flow of about 324 to 513 million of the waterfront project. That compares to about 150 to 280 million for the city project. With respect to general fund revenues, so net new sales, hotel, property tax revenues, under the waterfront project, we estimate about 100, 269 million, so, apologize, 269 million to 384 million in net new revenues. Versus the city-only project, we estimate about 111 to 114 million, it's not allowed to swing there. Again, the break even, waterfront project, we estimate about 11 to 23 years. Under the city-only project, about 49 to 67 years. And finally, the waterfront project serves to limit the city's exposure to the construction operational risk, minimizes the city's costs to about 20 million, and is expected to provide greater economic benefits for the city over both the shorter and long-term versus the city-only project. So with that, we'll pass it back to Stephen, and again, happy to answer any questions elsewhere from elsewhere in the report as well.
I don't have anything else to add, other than to put our recommendation slide up on the screen, which is, because of the noticing requirements that are, that are a part of AB 806, there is no action being requested of you tonight, so our first recommendation is that you continue the public hearing, take, open the public hearing, take public testimony, and then continue the public hearing for the ALPIF to the January 31 city council meeting, at which point you will have this item before you for action. And then secondarily, receive and file the economic analysis prepared by Cosmont Companies, the waterfront economic analysis pursuant to the requirements of AB 562 and AB 806. And that, unless Larry wants to add something, it sounds like, that concludes my remarks, and I'll give it to Larry. It sounds like he wants to add something.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just in full compliance with 562 and 806, those are disclosure statutes that require the city to be transparent about key terms and the conclusions under AB 562, just for the public record, is that there is no economic development subsidy, and that the conclusion under AB 806 is that all of the lease acquisition and property costs are disclosed in this report from a financial perspective. Just want to make sure that those are identified.
You guys are good?
We're good.
All right. What we're going to do now, I'm going to, not take any council questions, we're going to open up the public testimony and let anybody come down here and got your three minutes, and then we'll take comment cards first, and then we'll give it to the council. Okay. And anybody, you don't have to have these to speak, remember that. Okay, first one up is Laura Zahn. And the second one, David Deimers? Hello, close, just come on down. Okay. I did this before. You got to take penmanship class. Okay, hi.
Laura Zahn, District Four. Fiduciary Responsibility: Appearance of Fairness. It has become quite clear that one of the people on the council has overstepped their fiduciary responsibility, using the definition to mean trust. A person who has the power and obligation to act for another or others, and the public's trusts that a public official will act in the public's best interest. Public officials must overcome any inherent bias that they possess, and should avoid targeting particular constituents for favor or punishment, or I'll add ridicule, such as calling them sour-grate folks, Mr. Mayor, or dismissing their right to speak up at a publicly noted public hearing. Councilperson MD, using the appearance of fairness doctrine, which applies to quasi-judicial meetings, a decision-maker is not permitted to be judged or have biases regarding a matter. In this particular person's case, their actions have far surpassed just being biased. Their actions have incorporated their continued arrogance and disdain towards all the residents of Redondo Beach. This person's first infraction towards all the residents was her motion to remove a harbor commission condition of approval for off-site boat trailer parking. This motion was mean-spirited and served no one in the public realm. Their second infraction was when this person made a motion to not open a publicly noted public hearing, because in dismissing those who are in opposition, she also dismissed those who are in favor, thus prohibiting anyone from being, anything being said on the public record to stand in a court of law. If the city adhered to Robert's Rules of Order, we could oppose a point of order of an infraction of the rules for improper decorum in speaking, and I should also add improper decorum for storming out of a meeting. Your improper decorum in speaking was your motion not to open a publicly noted public hearing because you knew everything that everyone was going to say. As one speaker indicated, you did not know everything that everyone was going to say. Your motions, your actions, your tone, your mannerisms, your facial expression show your constant and complete disdain towards all of us, which brings me to the only responsible, rational action but to challenge you, Councilperson MD, on your multiple violations of the fiduciary duty and your multiple violations of the appearance of fairness doctrine, and to insist that you disqualify yourself and leave the hearing room, and to refrain from further participation on this application for Redondo Beach Waterfront LLC and CenterCal. You have a right to defend yourself. Any member disqualified based on the appearance of fairness grounds must leave the hearing room and must not participate in further concerning this application. Any member challenged should be given the opportunity to either disqualify or refuse to disqualify himself.
Your time is up.
I know, I'm giving her the, a little bit of information.
I'm not giving you any more time, though.
I'm waiting.
Your time is up.
I'm asking her to leave.
I guess our call of civility didn't quite get answered. Ma'am, your time is up, and I would ask you to please show some respect for the rest of the people here, and you need to s-
I have a right to ask her to leave. She has a right to defend herself. It's more than the three minutes.
We'll wait you out. Everybody has to go to the restroom.
Here's Mike Webb. I'd like his three minutes on this.
This three-minute timer has already expired.
It's, I know, I got all my words out in three minutes. Now, it's MD's time to either leave or defend her reason not to leave.
City attorney, what should I do here as the mayor? It's a learning experience every day.
Okay.
Ta-da.
Anyone can make a motion that, or a suggestion that someone recuse themselves, but there is no obligation under our code for Councilwoman MD to do so. It is similar to those who have called for Councilmember Brand to remove himself, which he did in, in regards to the quasi-judicial part, but although CenterCal filed, an attorney on behalf of CenterCal filed a claim that Councilmember Brand should recuse himself, it is ultimately his call on whether to do so, and in both Councilmember Brand and Councilwoman MD's case, I do not find a conflict of interest on either of their parts for handling this matter.
Okay.
It wasn't a conflict of interest, it was a violation of the Fairness Act, appearance of fairness, and a violation of her fiduciary duty.
Laura, your time has expired. I don't want to, I don't want to ask the officers to come down, please.
She doesn't have to go?
That is her decision, and I, it is my opinion that she does not have to.
David, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is David Deimer. I'm a 17-year-old resident of Redondo Beach, and I am here in favor of the waterfront initiative, as I'm listening to the economic benefits and getting more of an understanding of what we've got going on here, especially knowing that this is a project that's been 10 years in the making, that I am encouraging the city council and the mayor to keep, continue to move forward, not to take any steps back, and that, in light of the facts, that this is simply not a mall, it is not supersized, it is a right-sized project. It's not perfect, you're never going to have a perfect project, but it is a right-sized project in order to realize the economic benefits that were outlined today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Beth Manu.
Thank you, council, staff, District One. This was a great presentation today, really to understand the economics behind it. I was at the last meeting, and I'm really glad that things changed and you were able to go through it. But really, it's, it's such a non-issue, I think, if you think about it. We either have to pay 20 million, or whether it's 168 or 180- a hundred and eighty-three million in expenses, depending on whose numbers you look at. I mean, that's phenomenal, or it takes us double the number of years to pay it off versus eleven. I don't even understand why we're discussing this, really, but thank you very much for moving forward, we really appreciate it. Again, ten years in the making, this is something that can really set us apart from any other city on the Pacific Ocean, and I appreciate the work that you've done, I appreciate the council moving forward, thank you very much for everything you've done.
Council staff, I had prepared a, my name's John Thornton.
You gotta give your name to the clerk, please.
Executive Vice President of Leighton Construction, one of the largest builders in the nation. I'd prepared a speech talking about the merits of CenterCal, but in light of the audience, I think maybe that might sound a little disingenuous, so I thought about what could I say today that might help the citizens, you know, address the upcoming vote, and as an expert in construction, I think the merits of the project have been set out by council. It's a, it's a five-hundred-million-dollar investment by the developer, it's a four-hundred-million-dollar recoup by the city over the life, in addition to foregoing a hundred and fifty million dollars of expenditures that they have to face without the project. The citizens may say, let's just downsize it, and the economics of it would be at jeopardy. I've spent the last four years helping CenterCal study this project. This project has huge site issues that will cost tens of millions of dollars to fix just to go vertical. The project has liquefiable soils, it's got the old coastline that has riprap going all the way through it that will have to be mitigated. We've talked about this project, we'll celebrate topping out when we meet grade. Any other developer to look at this project today would see it's economically unfeasible, it's probably not buildable, and would run from the project. Brothers Grimm's fable of the golden goose seems appropriate here. Citizens would be voting against killing the golden goose, a billion-dollar golden goose at that. Thank you for cheering this, it's a wonderful project, and it's a gift to the city and the citizens.
Eleanor's name is John Thornton. Okay.
My name's Julian Harvey, I'm kind of a long-term resident of the USA, but certainly Redondo Beach for seven or eight years. I made a few notes, but these notes come from my heart. I'm totally in favor of the CenterCal waterfront project, particularly of what I've heard this evening, doing the financial analysis for the city development or CenterCal development, and as a Redondo Beach resident, we deserve a first-rate pier and harbor to visit and enjoy. I'm looking forward to the new restaurants, the unique theater. I think there's only two in LA County, and there's a third in Ventura County that operate the way CenterCal have postulated for the theater. It's not just a theater, it's not just a movie theater, it's a date night out, it's gonna be a great thing for young and older alike. I'm looking forward to the public market, the new bike paths, the walks along the harbor, and good parking structures, and improved access to the coastline. From what I've seen, the CenterCal project gives us increased coastal access compared to not doing anything or a city project. I do not appreciate or support those that want to raise our taxes to pay for a parking structure repair, a large boat ramp, and a swimming pool by the ocean. The city has it right, provided that they can agree on the CenterCal lease. And what I've heard tonight, I think it's got rid of the option, I was gonna say, provided we rebuild both north and south, but there's no option for that now, it's just a phase. Redondo will be a city that people will wish to visit, spend their money, and have a great experience. Right now, we are outshone by both Hermosa Beach and Manhattan Beach. The harbor repairs, developments, discussions have gone on far too long. Let's make a start on the reconstruction. Vote no on Measure C and make Redondo Beach great again. Thank you.
Thanks, Julian. Okay, Gary Millenick, please.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council members, Gary Millenick, North Redondo. I'm for the pier, for the pier development, more now than ever, because I've never really sat through one of his whole presentations. Excellent, and it looks good, and the cost to us is obviously, you know, much lower than what I thought it would be, and now that the, I guess the option clause is removed, and we know they're gonna do the south end, we know they're gonna do the parking lot, I'm all in, I got my sign. I hope you guys get it done. I think we've had enough public input. Can we get past the pub, the ROW people, which I don't see too many t-shirts out there tonight? Have you had enough? Have we had enough? When do you say everybody's had their voice, and we're gonna do what we think is best for the city? When do you come to that point? That's all.
Thank you.
I think we've reached...
Scott Fellows, a member of the chamber since eighty-four, and business owner in North Redondo for twenty-six years, and having a good time watching the waterfront go forward. I support my friends Julian and Gary in their support of the waterfront and all that it means. The big difference to me is that if the city has to do this, it's a hundred and fifty to two-hundred million that we're gonna be taxed and we're gonna have to give, and if the project goes forward the way it should, another project is gonna be taken care of by a private company that has more than enough money to make this work. I wanna see the expansion work, I don't want it to be a gigantic delamo mall, which it's not going to be, but I want it, I want Seaside Lagoon to be more friendly, and I want the pier to be more friendly, I wanna be able to walk down International Boardwalk and not trip on stuff. It's all good, and I want this project to go forward because it makes sense. One plan is that the city pays for it, and it's half-done and not good, and the other plan is a private company, CenterCal pays for it, and it goes forward, and everybody benefits, tax dollars, revenue, yes, a few more cars, Bill, okay, but how can you have more customers without some cars? So anyway, so this is gonna be a project that is necessary, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council staff, thanks for having me tonight, Charlie Semensky, resident of District One since nineteen eighty-two, with a small interruption in there. I'm just gonna speak about the lease tonight, I think you know where I stand on the project. A lease can't be written or negotiated by committee, kind of like this fellow back here says, how much input do you need? It's easy to criticize a process, it's also easy to criticize the lease, the language of the lease, et cetera, but it's difficult, apparently, to make constructive criticism, and let alone come up with some improvements. It's a sausage process, and it's not always pretty, and it's not always laser-targeted. I mean, we've seen some needs for change in the lease, and I think that that's the way the process is supposed to work. You get a bunch of people with oversight, you have some people leading the process, and you move forward. In a way, it's kind of doing its job, I think. The leaders have taken the lead, and we've got the public oversight, and we should end up with a good relationship and a really solid contract if we stay positively minded. Let's take the steps to, you know, watch the henhouse ourselves, and continue to move forward. It's hard to come up with these processes and visions to move forward. It's easy, and in fact cowardly, to sit back and criticize and nitpick and complain. Take a look at the heroes of U.S. history, and you won't see critics, and you won't see detail-oriented nitpickers, you will see people who came up with a vision and a plan, and took a risk, and committed to make some improvements. And, you know, if we wanna be Americans, we should try to do that in our little way, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one up, Bo Handrigan-Finry, tie, that's right, was that close?
Tell.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm a council District One, I'm a citizen, a resident, Jeff Ginsberg's neighbor, has nothing to do with my interests. I will say, I'm very supportive of this project, I've sat on the State Lands Commission, I've sat on the Coastal Commission, I've advised cities, counties, the state, and the feds on coastal projects. I've had the opportunity to preserve large swaths of natural land, the Bolts de Chico wetlands, Los Baticitas Lagoon, Burton Mesa Chaparral, all up and down the state, and then worked for a number of developers, including some of the largest in the country, on waterfront projects. And I am also local, I'm not hired on this at all, I just want you to know, I've looked at everything, and I think it's fantastic, the numbers look better than ever, the most recent changes to the lease are wonderful, and from the perspective of an experienced seasoned hand in this area of the law, and policy for that matter, I think you're right on course, and I think it's fantastic for this city, and I'm, you know, I'm very impressed with what you've done so far. I know it isn't easy, every city has an element of folks that wanna see things stay the same, but there's a way to do it, and having worked in the industry for a while, on the private side, I am so impressed with CenterCal, I really am, they're very different than a lot of the developers I've worked with in the past, all have their strengths and pluses, but I have never seen a group so community-oriented, so I think they really do have the interests of the city at heart, as you can see from what they've agreed to in the process thus far, I think you're in pretty solid condition. So I just wanted to put in my two bits from an objective perspective on the professional side, while also supporting the project as a citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the written requests, we have, come on down, anybody can come.
Okay, hey there, Mayor and City Council people, my name is Erica Snow Robinson, and I just have a few quick comments. I'd like to take the time to thank the city staff, project leaders, and City Council for their time and energy presenting info on this project. I love it, I cannot wait, I'm very excited, I can't wait for my twenty-three-year-old son to actually come home and not wanna go to Hermosa Beach, and actually stay in our own city when it's time to party with his friends. I'd like to specifically thank Councilmember Laura MD for answering any and all my questions anytime I have them on the waterfront project, since unfortunately, I can't get my own District Two City Councilmember to give unbiased answers or have open-minded views, except to advise his own District Two residents who do agree with him on the best way to disrupt progress and cause divisiveness in our city. So I'm really hoping this project can get going, and we can all get on board, and we can all move forward with that, because I'm excited. Thank you.
Hello, Mike Liam Sacks again. Obviously, I'm new to this process, as you saw through my opening remarks. The effects of Measure C, so is that taken into account, as far as when you're gonna vote on this, lease, is there a contingency for if Measure C passes? Has there been any discussion with the developer about that, how we go forward? The numbers, as far as the lower end, I don't know if you'd put those back up there, but as far as economic growth, it'd be interesting to know where you got the lower end, higher end out of that, as far as growth, predicted growth? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor, council people, staff, my name is Ian Bardine, I'm in District Two. I was listening to the staff report, and it brought to mind a question I was asked, do you wanna believe what I say or what you see? This matter of the CenterCal lease has been on this before the council back in December. The lease was not addressed because at the eleventh hour, some council members became aware of the potential disaster in the lease, which was the infamous option clause in favor of CenterCal. The fact that staff was prepared to allow the option to be included in the lease from the beginning, and was prepared to present the lease to the council with the option, should raise a red flag as to whether staff is in fact negotiating in the best interests of the city of Redondo Beach and its citizens. If it were not for the fortuity of Mayor Aspel becoming aware of the option and yelling "Whoa!", the council likely, based on their prior experience, would have followed staff's recommendation and agreed to the lease with the option. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I have not read the revised lease thoroughly, it does appear that the option has been removed. However, knowing that Fred Bruning, the head of CenterCal, is a shrewd businessman, it is not likely that he would give up a gem like the option without getting something valuable in return. What did the staff give him in return? Without a full disclosure of what staff has given away, I suggest that the revised lease be viewed with skepticism. Remember, we were told that the phase, the two phases, one of the benefits of the south phase being the second phase is that we will get the revenue from the parking structure. However, staff conveniently forgot to tell us, we will also have to keep up the liability, I mean, keep up the upkeep of it, and will be responsible for any liability. The problem with it is falling down, and there's a lot of potential that somebody can be hurt. Remember, one of the tenants of negotiations is to be prepared to walk away, and in this case, I think that it should be very closely scrutinized, and not just accept the fact of what we were told. Again, it was very impressive what was relayed by staff, however, the fact that they were willing to let us, to let the council and the lease go through with the option, leads me to believe that maybe what they're telling us is not totally the truth.
I am sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, with all due respect to the previous speaker, I have been following this project also very closely, and I think your staff has done an absolutely outstanding job of handling very complex issues, and I think the detailed economic analysis of the benefits to the city from the deal that they cut speak for themselves. I want to thank all of you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for, and the city staff, for conducting a thoughtful, thorough, thorough process that has gone on for years and years, and I think it's a testament to all of you that when the community stood up at the meeting in December and said, we want the project, but we don't want the option, you all listened to the community, and you responded appropriately. I have read the documents, the revised documents that were posted online, and it is everything that the staff reported to you and to the public tonight. I think that CenterCal stepped up, and the way it, with that little fix, I think it is ready to go. I fully support the project, everything that I've heard from the people in the second district that I work with, in the, around the pier and the harbor, support the project, and again, I just say thank you for moving the city forward, and I will remind the community, this is not just about economics, it's also about the quality of life in this city, and I think that the residents of this city will have the finest waterfront on the West Coast when this is finished.
Thank you. Come on down.
Good evening. My name's Chris Kuklinski, and I'm a member of the retail leasing team with CenterCal. And I just wanna come before you all, as well as the community, and tell you that I'm so excited to be part, and I'm proud to be part of this exciting project that will create a seaside village neighborhood for Redondo Beach. It's going to, as you saw in terms of the overview of the project, include a very diverse and broad mix of specialty shops, restaurants, cafes, health and fitness categories. It will have enormous amenities, open space, common seating. One of the things about greater L.A. is that it's very vehicular, and this will create an oasis for not only the community and the neighborhoods to gather, but also people that, as for myself, I live in Los Angeles, I can't wait to come down and bring my family to spend a day and play in the sand, as well as dine and shop. I think that it will, is being programmed to cater to the South Bay community, and I think that also, if you look at the total size of the property, the size and scale of the project is very appropriate for the site. The way the buildings are designed, the heights, the view quarters, the common space, the event program, it's truly a special site, and I've been involved in retail leasing for about 30 years now, and I've had the privilege to travel all over the U.S. in terms of the primary and tertiary markets. And this project will truly be a one-of-a-kind project, not just for the South Bay, but I have never seen a project that combines all of these wonderful attributes and activates the coastal community and brings in boat life and attaches to the bike trail and the running, walking, and the beach, and I'm just really happy to be part of this amazing project that I think everyone will be super proud of. And it's very family-focused, and there's a lot of heritage in Redondo Beach, so it will cater to both the young and old, and I can't wait to bring my young boy to fish off the pier.
Thank you. All right. Come on down. Anybody?
Good evening. Arnette Travis, Redondo Beach resident. Council mayor, and city staff, as you engage in the process of evaluating and improving the lease agreement between the city of Redondo and CenterCal Limited Liability Corporation, I urge this council to be mindful of the actual relevancies involved. Your responsibility is clear. Make the best deal for our city, despite the unqualified and uninformed ferocity of those who would attempt to define and dictate specifics of the lease agreement, the capabilities of would-be tenants to pay rents, and which businesses would fail or succeed in the project. Please focus your powers of discernment, as from this presentation today, it appears that you have focused on what is in the best interests of Redondo Beach. One thing is sure, the city is not a property developer, nor expert in the conduct of commercial concerns. Two independent market studies conclude that the waterfront project will be successful. It literally has something for everyone. As the owner of public land or trustee, your responsibility is to negotiate and procure the best leasehold possible. We've come a long way, achieving much toward the revitalization and making much-needed repairs to our waterfront. It is time to trust the experts. It is not time for amateurs to design our waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Lidl.
Hello again. Susie Royds, District 4. I am running for the council seat in District 4. One thing I haven't heard any comment about or reference to is financing for this $400 million project. So, being in the real estate industry, I'm well aware of the fact that you don't sign contracts and go into agreements without having your financing disclosed. So, I really would look forward and ask that we have some clarification on who's reviewing the financing, why, when, and where is this gonna be made available for our trusted council members to review? So, this is a big project, $400 million. Should there be any problem with the financing going forward, that burden will lay on the taxpayers, and that's my main concern, and I would like to see some verification of financing in place prior to the city coming to terms with signing on for this. Thank you.
Open mic. Hold on, sit down, John, please. We have a grand entry here, let's get it out of our system. No, come on down. Yeah, thank you. I didn't want him to run you over here. Come on.
Okay, Eric Coleman, mayor-elect. I'm really happy to be before this military tribunal here tonight. No, but seriously, this is a really important issue that we should be debating, what's gonna happen to the pier. Unfortunately, we're not gonna have debates this year for the first time in Redondo's history, or so I'm led to believe, as something to do with the Chamber of dime store jerks or Chamber of Commerce saying that they can't get their act together to sponsor debates because they don't wanna be viewed as a political organization and not to have a conflict of interest. Are you kidding me? This is an absolute joke, that you can't get your act together? What it is, is you're... Okay, let me slow down for a second. What does the... Okay, I'm still talking, I'm still talking. But what does the Chamber of Commerce actually even do for businesses, except for big-box retailers and power plants and that kinda thing? There's more red tape and bureaucracy and paperwork and permits and fines and fees and everything that every business has to pay to open. The Chamber of Commerce does absolutely nothing for business. You know what it is? The good old boys club. The Chamber of Commerce likes to sit around, pat themselves on the back, and tell themselves, "These good old boys." But this is like, what is the, you know, it's like some half-retarded bear that walks around and just mauls at things. Just mauls up the place, just mauls, 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 mauls. No, but see, it's like a black-and-white picture, the rainbow, it's like somebody who ate the meat out of somebody's sandwich. I mean, what is democracy if we don't have debates? It's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, and so, anyways, I invite all the candidates, Aspel, Brand, Sacks here, and this human enigma, Mowat, I don't know if he exists or not, we're gonna find out, but I invite you all to meet me in the octagon February 19th for the debate to end all debates.
Guess that has something to do with CenterCal somewhere. Okay. Thank you. Let's try and stick to CenterCal. Thank you very much. Or our Alpif, or whatever we're dealing with here.
Hi. Joan Irvine, District 1. Mayor, city council member, city staff. Once again, fantastic presentation. And I forget your name, so I brought up about the financing. My understanding, and this could just be urban legend, but CenterCal a few years ago had been working on a deal with Calpers to be funding this, and it's my understanding that Bo Brand, on his own volition, talked to them, and was urban legend, and that they're gonna have people boycott Calpers if they funded this project. So I don't know when you're gonna be talking about the funding, but I do have a concern that if that is not urban legend, that we really protect the people who are gonna be financing it. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Give your name to the clerk, please.
Oh, Sheila, resident. I always get up here and I have exactly what I'm gonna say, but then I hear everyone's comments, and it just rattles my brain. So, before I put too much into it, I'd like to extend myself to Councilwoman Samarko. You've done an excellent job. I appreciate your honesty, I appreciate everything you've done under so much...